I don't, I'm not clicking anything. I don't, but uh I don't know who's taking care of our presentation. I don't know. Janice, is there a light pointer?
This the pointer?
We only have to, you have to, if you need to back it up, you can do it this way, or you can shoot the arrows.
When you said this way, you mean what?
Like it says, when you-
Oh, I can't see that well.
It says, yeah, I know, I know. This would be better to use.
How do you use the pointer? I have no idea. It doesn't uh, the legs are just not powerful enough to-
It was doing it before.
Really?
Yeah, but it is- A little bit.
I don't see it at all.
You don't see it? It's there, yeah. Got it on staff now, so.
I don't think I've got anything really fancy in my system.
No, I do not.
Good evening. I want to welcome everyone here tonight for this meeting. Uh we have a um a joint meeting between the Board of Public Utilities and of the Unified Government Commissioners. I'm going to ask the clerk to please read the call and then roll call for the Commissioners.
A special session has been held on Thursday, December 12th, 2013, at 5 o'clock PM in the Commission chambers of the Unified Government, 701 North 7th Street, for a joint Unified Government Board of Public Utilities meeting regarding the BPU's 250 million capital improvement plan. Immediately following this session, the Unified Government Commission will recess into an executive session in the sixth floor conference room. Roll call. Walker? Townsend?
Aye, we're present.
McKeonan?
Here.
Mugia? Maddox?
Here.
Kane? Markley? Walters? Philbrook? Holland?
Here. Now can we have roll call for the Board of Public Utilities?
Roll call. Groneman? Gonzalez? Edson? Alvy?
Here.
Mylin? Bryant?
All right. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Um we had had a workshop a couple of months ago to talk about a big decision the Unified Government and the Board of Public Utilities are facing. I want to say a little bit, I wanted to make sure that we had this in the chamber because it's televised and I wanted to make sure that the public had an opportunity to see the presentations. I think we're, uh it's very important that our citizens see um this information and have an opportunity to think about it as well. Uh these are important decisions and I want to thank the um the Board of Public Utilities for the work they've already done on this and for the presentation they're going to do tonight. Um I also want to say this setup is a little awkward because we have like, the way the seating works is not ideal. I will say after the first of the year, we will have a new conference room here. Um part of the work we're doing here at the Unified Government is creating a a new space so that we can have these kinds of meetings in a roundtable setting and still have them televised. So uh so that the public can see all of our budget hearings, all of our standing committee meetings, all of the things that we do for the Unified Government are going to be televised now. Right now, we only have our Thursday night meetings and that's because we only have that option here in this room. So we're expanding that technology. Um we're very excited about that expansion, but what it means is, in order to prioritize television, uh we have to sit in kind of this awkward setting. So if you're sitting at home and it looks odd, in fact, you can be sitting right here and it looks odd. Um we should be sitting around a table facing each other and that's how we usually do our meetings with the Board of Public Utilities, so I appreciate everyone's patience um with the infrastructure we have for now. Um but this is a very important issue. I want to thank um the Administrator, Hayes, and Don Gray for your work on pulling this together. But right now, I'm going to turn this over um to David Alvy, the Chair of the Board of Public Utilities, who's done an enormous amount of work on this, and just turn it over to you for presentation. And after the presentation, we will have opportunity for questions and dialogue among the Commissioners and the Board Members. I will note, um we're not taking action tonight, so this is, there's not anything on the agenda that we're going to vote on tonight. What we're going to do is, we're going to discuss it and we'll um get a feel from the Commission and the Board Members in terms of timing of when we would put this on a public agenda, um we, and looking at our meetings coming up to put that out. So once we have that, then the public would be invited um at that public hearing then to have comment on it at that time. So if you had come here hoping to speak tonight, I do issue an apology, but there will be another opportunity before there's an actual vote taken, uh there will be a public, opportunity for public comments so our public can weigh in on your opinion. So I appreciate the people who are here and I appreciate the people watching on TV. Mr. Alvy.
Thank you. Uh good evening. And just for for the people at home, my name is David Alvy and I currently serve as President of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities. I would like to thank the Commission once again for your time and attention to the future generation plans of the BPU. As you recall, at our joint meeting of September 12th of this year, we described a new federal mandate that one issued by the United States Environmental Protection Agency known as the MATS rule, otherwise known as the Mercury and Air Toxic Standards Rule. And at that time, we described the impact that would have on our utility and on utilities across the nation. And we described as well at that time, how the BPU was moving forward in order to comply with that new MATS rule. Now, since that joint meeting, the Board of Public Utilities has also presented the same information that you received to various constituencies in the community through our newsletter, through local news media, and presentations to business and neighborhood groups such as the Fairfax, the Industrial Association, and the Black Chamber of Commerce, as well as to the Livable Neighborhoods Task Force. And we've also presented this information to elected officials at the local, the state, and the federal levels. Frankly, we have presented this information to any of our family and friends who would listen to us. There is much more communication to be done, to be sure, but we are grateful for this opportunity, for this meeting with you because we believe it will be very helpful in informing our citizens and our customers about the situation the BPU finds itself in and how we intend to meet the MATS rule. So really, the purpose of this joint meeting is simply to present to you the various options that the Board of Public Utilities has analyzed over the course of the past few years to comply with the MATS rule and to present to you our recommendation as to the best option. Over the past few years, as BPU staff and Board Members have learned about the MATS rule and researched our options for complying with the MATS rule, we kept in mind our mission, simply this, to keep the power flowing reliably and to keep the cost to our customers as affordable as possible. Unfortunately, every option available to us and to any utility that is dealing with the MATS rule, every option available to comply with the EPA mandate will increase the cost of power for the community. The MATS rule is forcing the shutdown of coal-fired generation in, across the country in many places, and therefore it is increasing the cost in every utility that has traditionally used coal for power generation. There are a few outliers out there, those who are primarily receive hydro power or nuclear power. They're not affected by this, but any utility that uses gas or coal will see an increase in the cost to them because of the MATS rule. So, given that every option is going to increase the cost for our customers, it is, has been our duty to try and find the least costly option and at the same time, maintain our status as a reliable provider of power to this community. So we intend to do four things this, this evening. First, to show that the advantages of our recommended option, namely to meet the MATS rule by installing air quality control equipment on our Nierman plant so that we may continue to use coal as a fuel source. The advantages of that recommended option outweigh the advantages of the other options. Simply put, the, the recommended option to install air quality control and continue to burn coal provides us with the most reliability and it allows us to continue to employ our own residents in a plant that is under our own, our own local control, and it has the lowest cost over the long term. Second, we intend to describe the process that the BPU followed that led us to recommend this option. Thirdly, we will describe why and how we are not recommending the other options. For instance, why we do not propose to close the Nierman plant and attempt to purchase power from outside this community. Why we do not propose to convert Nierman to gas-fired generation. Why we are not proposing to tear down Nierman and replace it with a new gas-fired plant. Those are all options that we have analyzed and looked at, and based upon all the analysis, we have come to this recommended option, again, to install air quality controls on Nierman to continue to burn coal. These other options, while they have certain advantages, make no mistake, other options do have advantages. They have significant disadvantages in terms of even greater cost to our customers and in terms of cost unpredictability, and therefore even problems with reliability of generation. Finally, we will compare the situation facing the BPU and our decision, our recommendation to install air quality control equipment on Nierman with the situation of neighboring utilities, and try and answer the question why they decided in the similar situation to install similar air quality controls on their coal-fired generators, even on power plants that are not as new as the Nierman plant. So we have brought along our staff, excuse me, to answer any questions, to do presentations. We've also brought in some experts. Uh Dave McGilvery, uh who you may know, from Springstead Financial, who uh will talk to you about the financing of this, uh this project. But also, we brought along Mr. Ed Chicanowitz, and we'll go into a more detailed introduction of Mr. Chicanowitz later, but Mr. Chicanowitz will speak to the factors that this utility and others in the nation have taken into consideration when they had decided to maintain their coal-fired generation, even with the cost created by environmental compliance, especially with the MATS rule. So, at this time, I would ask Mr. Gray to give a brief recap, in fact, of what was presented in September.
Thank you, Dave. I'm Don Gray, General Manager for the Board of Public Utilities. I want to thank the Mayor and the Commissioners, members of our Board, Unified Government, and also our BPU staff that are present here this evening. Before I get into the actual presentation, I would like to identify, we have a number of staff here, but I would like to identify two key staff that are going to be and have been directly involved in overseeing this project and the planning of it and the designing of it. And I would like to introduce Dong Watt, if you'd please stand. He oversees electric production. He also has an engineering degree. And also, the project manager that works for us, that works out of electric production, is John Frick. John? He brings, uh John brings about 27 years of experience to this project, and I must say, he's a very proud graduate of Kansas State University with a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering. We also have approximately six additional engineers on our staff that work in the production area that were, have also been intricately involved in this project. Our engineering team oversees all engineering, procurement of equipment, they monitor the scheduling, the quality of the, control of the contract, value engineering and any change orders. And that's typical of any key project that's in electric production. That's the, our key core engineering staff. So they currently are assigned this, this major undertaking. Now, just a little background again. We have two of our older units, the Quandero 1 and the Quandero unit number 2. One was built in 1966 and number 2 was built in 1971. And we have some older, smaller combustion turbines. Now, the unit 1 at Quandero and the unit 2 at Quandero are coal-burning facilities, but they are also dual-fuel. They can burn coal or gas. Years ago, when they were first came online, they burned gas most of the time when gas was inexpensive. And then they burned coal primarily in the winter when gas was more scarce, but with the volatility of gas, the scarcity of gas, they were switched completely over to coal burning uh some years back. Nierman unit number 1, which is one of the most cost-effective, one of the most efficient coal plants in the United States, came online in 1981. And we also built a combustion turbine number 4 that came online roughly about 2006. And then, as you know, many of you know, and many of the Commissioners were here when we approached you about some ownership in Dogwood, which is a combined-cycle gas facility. We do have 17% ownership, and we did that roughly a little over a year ago. Just to summarize, we have, Nierman again is a coal plant, 235 megawatts. Quandero 1 and 2 can, um you can see that they're slightly less than 100 megawatts, but they can burn both, gas and coal. Now, the reason for the asterisk on the Quandero units is that because of the MATS rule, April of 2015, we will no longer be able to burn coal in those two units. The reason that we're not going to burn coal is we're not going to invest slightly over $300 million in order to put controls on the, those two older plants. They will strictly burn gas. The challenge with that, however, is they're not as efficient burning gas, so costs will go up for that energy being produced. So we will not use those units, actually, we will use those units less than half the time. We estimate roughly about 25% utilization. We also have the various sizes of combustion turbines, and then we also have renewables. Uh people often ask, what are you doing in the renewable area? Well, we have access to some federal hyd, federal hydro of 44 megawatts. We have wind, 25 megawatts currently, landfill gas down in Arcadia, Kansas, 3.5 megawatts. And then we just recently formed a purchase power agreement for the Bowersock Mill up by Lawrence. For a total of 79 and a half megawatts, which is approximately 16% of our energy comes from renewable sources. Again, the main issue, as Dave highlighted, the EPA issued a federal mandate ordering all utilities to comply with the new air quality control standard, and that is what we abbreviate as MATS, which is the Mercury and Air Toxic Standards Rule. It was finalized in April of 2012. If you don't put controls on your coal plants, you cannot operate any, any longer than April of 2015. Because we are planning, and that is the plan, the best economical solution is to put controls on Nierman. And so we did ask for an extension of time through our state and we were granted another year. So currently, Nierman, if we go ahead and move forward with the controls, we are allowed to operate that unit until April of 2016 without having controls on while we're under construction. We estimate the project timeline to be roughly April of 2017, roughly a year beyond the 16 date. What we've been doing in the meantime is, we're evaluating to see what type of energy we can obtain to fill in that gap. We're also going to see and continue to work with our legislators to try and get a continuance or an extension of time. So we'll be working very, very hard at that. But right now, uh that is still an unknown for that approximate one year. Now, we will do value engineering and we'll do, try to come up with creative ways of condensing that timeline. So it's, it's not that long a period. So we haven't got to that point yet because we haven't released any contracts yet until we get some funding. And also, as you are aware, we have a consent decree that we had approval with Sierra Club, and they also have approved of our plan, which is to burn gas at Quandero after April 2015, and then also the AQC, the air quality control equipment to be put on Nierman. And they will allow us to, the Sierra Club will, in their agreement with us, allows us to operate Nierman until September of 2017. The main key here will be us working with the state to see if we can get, again, a continuance of that additional year. We already have approval with Sierra Club to do so. Okay, in preparing for this decision, we know that the mandates have applied to all utilities that have coal plants especially. We have evaluated all the alternatives and we've come up with three feasible options. We have begun, over the last couple of years, communicating the impact of the new EPA regulations that is requiring action on our community for the last 24 months. And uh also, the, our strategic plan, uh we have reviewed that over the last 10 years or so, which has also helped point the way and give us direction. Um we've also given environmental updates in a number of publications. You know, we have the BPU connection that we have presented information in and so forth. We also presented this to the, first kind of introduced it to the Unified Government in a joint meeting in December of 2012. We've also given presentations at the Chamber, at the Fairfax Industrial Association meetings, and some neighborhood groups and so forth. And then, of course, June 2013, we reached the consent agreement with the BPU and the Sierra Club. And then, most importantly, we had the joint meeting in September, on September 12th with the BPU and Unified Government. But we must make a decision to meet the compliance deadlines. But as part of that due diligence, we polled all neighboring utilities within the Southwest Power Pool, which is the, kind of the organization that oversees the trans- Power Pool, which is the, kind of the organization that oversees the transmission system in our area, to evaluate their approach to the mandates. We compiled detailed financial modeling of all possible solutions to determine the three best possibilities. We developed a selection criteria profile to determine the best solution. And then we consulted with national experts to validate the best solution. So we've done a lot of background work, a lot of number crunching and so forth to reach our conclusions, our summaries. Our three key options. Number one, that we were looked at was the, you simply purchase your power, obtain power from outside sources, or generate with natural gas. Number two, which is convert Nierman to gas, or add gas turbines. Or option three, generate with coal and add the air quality control to Nierman. Okay? Now, I wanted to say that and emphasize that option one, we had listed on the, the past, the PowerPoint slide eliminated. And we also have it identified here under the pros and cons. Option one, purchase power agreements, we have that eliminated. And the reason is, the Southwest Power Pool did an engineering review of where any possible constraints are in the transmission system. And they came up with three locations within their footprint that have transmission constraints, and Kansas City area is one of those. So what does that mean? That means that we would have a difficult time importing all of our energy all of the time. The study went on to say, and this was an outside independent review for Southwest Power Pool, and the study went on to say that we would be vulnerable to reliability issues over a thousand hours a year, that there would be enough constraint on the transmission system that we might not get enough energy in to meet our native load. And we have a hundred-year history in this community of supplying energy, meeting our native load, meeting the growth of our community, and we've always done that through our history. They rely upon us being able to provide that energy, Southwest Power Pool does, to overought for the stability of the grid. If we backed off and just was an importer of all of our energy, we would subject our citizens, our industries, our businesses with interruptible power roughly eleven percent of the year. And I might mention that not only our own citizens and businesses, but we also provide energy to Water One, all their water treatment facilities are powered through our supply of energy to them. So if there was any interruption at any point in time, it could jeopardize the water system, not only for our community, but also of most of Johnson County. So, in evaluating the pros and cons, I feel we won't, we are not recommending just importing all of our energy as a, as a solution. We, we, we are not recommending that. Now, looking at option two and option three. Option two is converting Nierman to gas or adding some gas turbines. The capital cost for converting Nierman to gas is lower than, than adding the AQC. However, as we know, we get into the gas issue of the volatility of the price of, of the obtaining gas supplies. And, and you'll be shown here in a little while that volatility. We have a ten-year snapshot of, of past history that shows an extreme level of volatility. Give you one example, back in nineteen ninety-nine, there was extreme volatility in pricing. That was during the deregulation period. And we paid, we had, Nierman was offline due to a conveyor fire at the time. And there, and it was right in the worst period of time of the year was in summer. We ended up paying two-thousand dollars a megawatt hour at one point for our energy. And to give you, uh, an example, we, we produce energy out of Nierman at roughly twenty-three dollars a megawatt hour. But during that stressful week that prices were skyrocketing, we had to have an outlay of cash of ten million dollars in one week. And those kinds of things are a real possibility, and that's why we got to maintain control of our energy and our energy costs. Also, the gas, not only the volatility, you can't store gas, you're also, uh, dependent on transmission lines for that gas. It could be interrupted. So we would basically be leaving it in the hands of the supplier. Whereas on the AQC, we have very stable, and we'll be showing that as well through a graph, but very stable coal prices over the last ten years. We anticipate stable coal prices for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Because we obtain our coal from the Powder Basin area in Wyoming. We also can store coal. We have a history of operating with coal and that is the lowest cost solution and gives us the most. What are, what are, especially our industrials tell us? Is they want the lowest cost, reliable, the key is reliable, energy. Because if you start interrupting their operation, even just a small amount, there's a huge cost factor to that. They want stable, they know costs are going up, but they want stable pricing. And when you operate on gas, you cannot guarantee stable pricing. We're not alone in this effort. There's a number of utilities around us in our area, in our region, that are also undertaking air quality control projects. And I have a listing of a, a number of those. Interestingly enough, Nierman came online in nineteen eighty-one, but it's newer than eighty percent of the units that have been retrofitted to meet AQC. So when you look at it, Nierman is still a young and considered a young, efficient, low-cost coal unit. And our costs for compliance are in line with other surrounding utility projects. And the little asterisk, as you can see, the, the single asterisk is the completed projects already at these facilities, and then the double asterisk are those that are in progress. So almost all of them either have been completed or in, or in progress. Also, one of our neighbors that we compare ourselves to because they are a public utility and they are similar in size to the Board of Public Utilities is the city of Springfield. And they have undergone similar decisions with their board and elected officials. And to give you an example, they performed an extensive study and they took three of their newer units and they put air quality controls on them. The three small units that were dual-fuel that are older, they went ahead and just are moving them to gas-fired. But they also know that they will have, because of the inefficiencies of burning these coal plants with gas compared to coal, they won't use these units very much. Now, cost comparisons. The annual generation cost currently with Nierman is sixty-three million dollars. Option one, if we just simply, and again, we're not proposing it anyway, but nonetheless, we're showing the costs here. If we just purchased the energy, we estimate a approximate cost of a hundred-and-twenty million annually, which is an annual increase of fifty-seven million. The megawatt hour increase would go up from roughly thirty, now, this is with O and M costs and everything built into that number. This is not just energy cost. But right now, with Nierman, operating costs and so forth and the fuel costs, it's operating at about thirty-nine dollars a megawatt hour. If we were to go to option one solely, it'd jump to seventy-four dollars, and that would be roughly a twenty-five dollar a month increase to a residential customer on their average bill. Option two is the gas average price over ten years, which comes out to roughly five dollars and eighty cents. The annual generated cost using gas would be a hundred-and-twenty-seven million, roughly sixty-four million annual increase, which would roughly amount to thirty dollars a month increase on a residential bill. And then, looking at the coal AQC project, it does increase costs from sixty-three to ninety-six, which is thirty-three million annual increase, but it amounts to about twelve dollars a month increase. And that's phased in over a three-year period, that twelve-year. So it wouldn't be twelve dollars next year, it would be twelve dollars phased in over three years. So, the selection, numerous factors went into choosing the best solution to comply. You know, the cost implications to our citizens near and long-term. You know, we think in our business, long-term, the reliability of the solution. We know that coal is a stable-priced commodity. We don't, we don't have to concern ourselves with volatility of the fuel, stability. It'd be stable pricing for upwards of thirty years, the, the expected, uh, continued life of the plant. And then, if we bring in, the more we import power to our community anyway, we're rely, relying on outside entities for the cost of that energy and also the reliability and assurance that they're going to continue to supply that energy. So the more control we have, the better, it fits all the basic criteria. The financing, we looked at, the probability, timing, costs, and more discussion will be on the financing piece when Dave McGilvery from Springstead, our financial advisor and also Unified Government Advisor, comes up to, to present some information. And again, it's our long-term strategy and has been through our master plans, in our updated planning in the recent five-year period. This is our best solution moving forward, in our view. And then also, the consent decree that was agreed to by the Sierra Club and us, they also are approving our plan. And again, our, our history, we've been generating for roughly a hundred years in this community. And I, and I might also add, when talk about rates, our rates are right in line with all of our other utilities in the area. In fact, we're a little bit below some of them, and we're slightly above West Star, but we're real close to one another. Their costs are going to continue to go up over the next few years, have to, because they've been making big investments as well. That's just the trend of this business, it's just what's happening. So again, we are recommending option three, which is the putting AQC. It's the short and long-term best solution. It gives us reliability of our power, keeps control of the energy. And by the way, you know, we also work with Unified Government and the Windout Economic Development Council in, in, in bringing new business here, retaining businesses and so on, and we will continue to do that. It's the least impact on the fuel volatility, which could be a big factor when you talk swings in gas. It may be four dollars today, could be twelve dollars next year. You just don't know. That won't occur with coal. Again, it ensures a long-term power solution for our community, mitigates the threat of outside impacts. It's a favorable bond market right now, and again, Dave McGilvery will talk more about that here in a second. And aligns, uh, BPU's long-term fuel diversicate, dirt diversification. We will have a nice mix of renewables, some gas, and keep our main flagship still with coal for its remaining life. And it surprises, uh, it supports our agreement with the Sierra Club, and we've had self-dome generation for roughly a hundred years. Now, I know that there's been a concern about the big picture, what's going on around us? Are we the only ones? So we have, we contacted American Public Power Association, which is the association that our organization belongs to, and just kind of seeking, is there an expert that we could ask to see if they'd be willing to kind of review our situation and come in and make some comments, independent comments to this body? And Ed Cucanowicz is an independent engineering consultant that has designed, built and tested environmental controls for power plants for over thirty years. He works for electric utility companies in planning and carrying out environmental strategies for coal and natural gas generating plants. So at this time, I would like to introduce Ed Cucanowicz.
Thanks, Don. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission and board, staff, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As Don said, I'm going to go over some of the technical details, but I promise I'll make it understandable. I want to make it clear first, before we go too far, that-
Can you try to speak us directly into the microphone as possible?
Of course, I will, thank you. I won't stand back, so. Is that better? I want to make clear that when I was first contacted about possibly helping out, before I agreed to this assignment, I asked Don for the engineering reports. I used the internet and dug up as much stuff as I could about, uh, the facilities and, and the market here, and I came to my own conclusion. So I'm here not really telling you what he said, I'm telling you what I think is, is real, which is coincident with, with what BPU has proposed. So I'd like to go through that step by step with you. In terms of an agenda, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, why invest in, in Nierman. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about what some of the risks might be on this AQC investment. We think they're small. We think they're small and manageable. They fall into categories of cost, perhaps additional mandates and the role of CO2. We'll talk a little bit more about some of the alternatives that, uh, Don has, has addressed. That's, as he pointed out, switching to natural gas, combined cycle, and, and some work perhaps on wind, and then a final recommendation. The first point I'd like to make is that you should appreciate, Nierman is a valuable asset. It's city-owned, it's, it's basically yours, and it can be the source for a lea-, a least-cost power for the community. What I'd like to do here is first just quickly summarize some of the results that have come out of the engineering studies conducted by, by Black and Beech and staff, and then we'll come back to these throughout the course of the next twenty minutes in a little bit more detail. I'd like to call your attention to the column on the left. Uh, that's the estimated retail power cost. And what we're going to do is we're going to go down the three rows and go through them piece by piece and, and discuss them. The top row is the case where you would continue to fire coal. The action would be to retrofit the unit with the AQC, as we've discussed. That's a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar capital expenditure, but it allows you to use fuel that's about two dollars a million BTU in price, which is a very attractive price. And that comes up with the estimated power cost of fifty-eight dollars per megawatt hour. Second row is simply taking the unit as it is and switching it to natural gas. I say simply because it's not that. You actually still have to put in an environmental control system. We'll talk about that. It's smaller, but it's, it's, it's still, uh, something that has to get, to be done. It's smaller, but it's still something that has to be done. That's about a hundred million. And there, of course, we'll be going to gas. Now, it would be imprudent to look at just one natural gas price. So we've calculated this for a range of prices from four dollars a million BTU up to six. In reality, it could go higher, but these are the numbers that a lot of people on the national level are looking at from four to six. So that's the numbers that we're using here. And there you can see basically at the low end, the price is the same, but it could go up to eighty dollars a megawatt hour. But again, to have that same price, you've got to have four-dollar gas for the next twenty or thirty years. The last row is where you would pretty much knock down Nierman and put in a brand-new, what we call combined-cycle plant, which is a very efficient way of making power, but its capital cost is even higher. And there, if we run the estimated retail price for fuel prices of four to six dollars a million BTU, it's basically the same at the low end. It comes out fifty-six, but I mean, that's within five percent. We're not that good at nailing these numbers within five percent. So it's basically the same, and it could be as high as seventy. So that's the summary of what we've come up with. And what I'll do is work through exactly how we did that and what some of the options are. Regarding Nierman, it has a number of attributes I wish to call out. And again, the benefit is that it is a basis for reliable, stable power prices. It is a competitive unit within the Southwest Power Pool. Its efficiency is right in the sweet spot where people like to run. So it's very competitive and it runs at a very high rate. It's reliable and it's used a lot. The metrics are that are the following. You see the term availability. What that means is that if you consider the hours of the year that you want the unit to run, how many of those is it actually capable of running? And those numbers for Nierman are pretty good. They're eighty-six to ninety percent. That's a good, solid number. The second number is the capacity factor. And what that means is that if you ran this pedal-to-the-metal twenty-four-by-seven, you looked at the total energy you could get out, what does that compare with what you're actually getting? And with Nierman, over the last five to seven years, it's been about eighty percent, which is good. Again, that's a strong number on a national basis. So the point is, when you look at the performance numbers, they're pretty attractive. The other factor is the size of the unit, and that's measured in terms of the megawatts of capacity. It's not a very large unit, but it's big enough to be able to exploit what we call economies of scale when you build something, which means you get a lot for your money. Now, the analogy, if you don't mind me using one, is the following. If you were to add a small room to your house, say you wanted to add two-hundred-and-fifty square feet, you'd get the cost and it'd come out so many dollars per square foot, and you'd have that number. But if you maybe made that room five-hundred square feet, its actual cost would be less. Why? Because there's a lot of fixed things you do, like knocking out the walls. That's going to be the same, no matter how big that room is. Analogously, for the Nierman capacity, it's able to exploit economies of scale. And that's important, because we'll come back later. And we'll talk about a lot of units that are converting the gas, and that's because they're small. The unit also has significant lifetime remaining. We think twenty-five years plus is a reasonable number. And also, again, where your location is, you have very stable fuel prices. Now, let me follow up this last bullet with this chart. And I hope you can see this. This plots a ten-year history of fuel, coal and natural gas prices. The vertical axis is the dollars-per-million BTU, which is the way we buy the fuel. And it shows the trends over a ten-year period. If you look at the coal line, which is sort of the lime green, you might think that we drew it with a straight edge. Well, in fact, we didn't. It's actually the history of the way the coal prices have played out over the last decade. The natural gas, you would describe anything but a straight line. And I think we're all familiar with the volatility. We're also familiar with, you know, the new paradigm of natural gas availability. And I think the availability will be better, but it would be imprudent, I think, to think you're going to have a straight line of gas prices. It's never happened before, and I don't see it happening again. You might not have quite the same variability, but there will be some variability. So it's those kind of metrics that we look at in comparing fuel price, because electricity is essentially converting fuel to power. What I'd like to do now is just tell you what you're buying. I'm not going to go through the details of the power plant and the environmental controls. I believe you've heard that before. But I think it's important to point out the pieces that are being acquired. And what's significant is that these are mature technologies and that I think the risk for investment that is cost-going, being escalated, is very low. So we'll start here, again, with a schematic of the power plant. And what I'm going to do is just jump straight to the first box there that I'm showing, the box that's after the boiler. That's basically analogous to the catalytic converter in your car. It's a catalytic converter that makes nitrogen oxides go away. We call it a selective catalytic reduction reactor. There's a hundred-and-thirty thousand megawatts of coal-fired capacity in the U.S. with these catalytic converters on them. They're mature, and we think we can predict the price on them. So I, in my opinion, Black and Beach's estimate of that price is a pretty accurate one. Moving on, the next item that you will be acquiring will be a powdered-activated carbon system for mercury. That's the namesake of the mercury and air toxics rule. There's fifty thousand megawatts of capacity with this device going on it. And again, we think it's a mature technology and we think we understand the cost. The next device you'll be buying is a flugas to sulfurization system. These have been used on a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand megawatts of capacity. So again, it's a very mature technology, and the costs that Black and Beach have come up with, I think, in my opinion, are valid. And finally, the fine particles are controlled with something called a pulse-jet fabric filter. Similarly, at least forty thousand, probably closer to fifty thousand. Same point, these are mature technologies. They're not things that are out of the box, and there's risk for price or performance. One concern that I've heard you had, and that's a valid one, is what if we pour this money into this system and we find that in five years we're at ground zero and we have to start off again? In my opinion, having done this for a very long time, I think the risks for that are small. And if there are any changes, I think the system that you're putting in will be able to handle them. Why do I think that? Well, number one, the AQC that you'll be putting in is truly state-of-art. It's basically the best that people have right now. And so you will be having essentially an environmental control system that's capable of a lot of performance. And it's also important to recognize that EPA, if they come up with adjusting their regulation or maybe changing things, they can't just pick a number out of the air. I know sometimes it seems that way, but they have to have a reason. They have to go to a technology and say, that technology is best for this type of application. And they'll get involved with the data coming from that technology, and they will do an analysis to see what the numbers look like. So they can't just make up a number. And they just went through this with the MATH program, and they just went through this with the Cross-State Air Pollution Program. And the good news is, from your end, is that you will be having the platinum standard, so to speak, that they've used to base their regulation. So there shouldn't be any evolution from that. Let me go into this table in a little bit more detail. If you could look at the first row, again, the mercury and air toxics program. Basically, the major emissions there are mercury and acid gases like hydrogen fluoride, hydrogen chloride, and fine particles. The EPA picked the numbers that they wanted in the regulation based on their analysis of using activated carbon in a pulse-jet fabric filter. You're buying activated carbon in a pulse-jet fabric filter. In the Cross-State Air Pollution Control Rule, which addresses both nitrogen oxides and sulfur dioxide, same thing. For nitrogen oxides, EPA picked their number based on selective catalytic reduction. You're putting that in. They base their number for SO2 on flugas to sulfurization. In fact, state-of-art flugas to sulfurization, sorry I didn't define that, that's what you're putting in. So you pretty much have the platinum standard that's been the basis for the last wave of regulations. And in my opinion, these are good to go for a couple of decades at least. There isn't any hidden submarine technology that's going to pop up and essentially turn this on its head. So I think once this investment is made, it's going to be the solid basis for quite some time. Well, the third risk is, as we say, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla. It's CO2. Last June, the President instructed the EPA to issue by June 1st of 2014, limits on carbon dioxide on existing units. Everybody's going to have to do this. It looks as though the agency will pick CO2 limits based on efficiency improvements. I shouldn't say it looks as though they will. They've said that, that's their mandate. There are CO2 scrubbers people are experimenting with, but they won't be used for quite some time. So the point is, the agency will come up with some type of reduction in carbon dioxide achievable by plant efficiency improvements. Everybody will have to do this. Nierman is no more or less disadvantaged or advantaged than anyone else. So for example, right now, the unit produces about two-thousand-four-hundred pounds of CO2 per megawatt hour. That's about the national average. And there are a number of things that can be done to improve the efficiency that can get you up to two, three, and four percent. My opinion is that it's going to be between three and four, and I think that will be adequate. So there will be some things. They are low-cost. The good news is, they have a payback. Because the way you get the CO2 controlled and the way you emit less is to be more efficient, you're buying less fuel. So there is a payback. It might be five years or seven years, perhaps longer than what a lot of people are used to seeing, but there is a payback. So again, it will build the infrastructure of the unit. Okay, let's go back a little bit and make sure we understand how these other options compare, because I went over them kind of quickly. You know, the one thing that's very attractive that a number of people are doing is just switching their plants to gas, because you don't have to put it in the backend system. But I want to make it clear, for Nierman, you would still have to spend about a hundred million. You'd still have to buy a catalytic converter to get to control the nitrogen oxides. It wouldn't be nearly as big. It wouldn't be nearly as expensive, but you'd still need a catalytic converter. So when you add that up with the way you change, the way you burn the fuel, there's about a hundred million. The second thing to recognize is that the boiler was not designed for gas. It was designed for coal. And again, if I can ask you, if I can use another home analogy, if you've had a home fireplace that used wood and you converted it to gas, you might have noticed that if you stand in front of the fireplace, once you converted the gas, you don't feel as much heat, because it's that yellow flame. It's the yellow spectra that delivers the radiant flux, to sound like an engineer, sorry, but that's what it does. That's the way the Nierman boiler is designed, to have that yellow spectra and that radiant flux. If you're just using gas, it's more of a blue flame, and you don't get as much heat where you want it. So what you have to do is modify the boiler to capture that heat before it goes back up the stack. You can get some of it, but it's really hard to get all of it. And that's where the challenge is. So the problem is, without that boiler being designed for gas, it's not going to be as efficient. That probably will compromise it in terms of competition. It will not compete as well in the local markets as it will, because you will be using a fuel less efficiently. And when you add to that the natural gas price risk, as we showed in that earlier graphic, you know, it's a slippery slope. Some people can handle it, and I'll show why in a minute. But for this particular location, I don't think it's appropriate for Nierman. The second item is, again, just to bring in a bulldozer, knock down the plant, and build a brand-new one. That can be done, but that's even more capital, north of three-hundred million. And as I showed you earlier, the cost for electricity for that is competitive, but only at today's price. And so if today's price of four dollars stays indefinitely, it'll work. But again, most prudent analysis look at a range between four to six. And when you go to six, you see it's a higher cost of electricity. Now, let's look a little bit about what is going on around the nation. This map here, what I did was access a database where people have announced, I am converting a unit to gas. And these are decisions that have been made. And so we plotted these up on a map. And the blue dot are power plants that are switching to gas, just the way Nierman could, with the kind of modifications that we talked about. The red triangles are knocking down the plant and building a new combined-cycle unit. And you see a few of those. The green diamonds are people who kind of want it both ways. They want to run gas, but they want to have coal as a backup. And there aren't too many of those. They tend to be in the southeast. And then you see the yellow dot is where we are. And so you might look at that and say, well, you know, there's a lot of people doing this. Why can't we? Well, like anything else, or like real estate, it's location, location, location. It depends on where you are in the price of fuel. What do I mean by that? If you look at this version of the graphic, I drew a box. And within that box, with one exception, all the units are one-hundred-and-twenty-five megawatts or less. They're half the capacity of Nierman. And remember, we talked about economies of scale? Those units are so small, they get clobbered. If you get an estimate for an air quality control system for them, it's through the roof in terms of the power, because they have that disadvantage because they're small. So that's one particular reason. The other thing I've shown is a bright orange line between Kansas City and Campbell County, Wyoming. Now, why did I pick Campbell County, Wyoming? Turns out, it's where most of the Powder River Basin coal comes from, which is the low-sulfur, very attractive coal that we tend to be using a lot of in the U.S. And if you didn't realize it, I'd like you to know you're in a very advantageous position, because with a good transportation infrastructure and with a good rail center, you have excellent access to this Powder River Basin coal. And that's why it's two dollars a million BTU, and that's why it'll probably stay that way. You should know that of that, two dollars a million BTU, more than half is for transport. So when you go to the right and look at the people on the East Coast, they can't get PRB in at nearly that price. And so that's one of the reasons why they tend to be using natural gas. I don't think my pointer is functioning too well, but okay. Well, in Louisiana, in the southeast, they have access to gas. But I know that some utilities there have bought in coal from South America. I know some utilities in the northeast have gotten bids for coal from South Africa and Poland. They can't get Powder River Basin coal all the way across the country. So it's a much different choice. It's a much different calculation of what's cheapest. So that's why you might hear from a lot of people, changing the gas is good. For them, it is. Depends on the fuel mix and depends on the size of their unit. Other options here in the heart of wind country, you know, you have to think about wind. And certainly, BPU has fifty megawatts either operating or in planning. And certainly, there's a lot of potential. But the one thing, and BPU, of course, is voluntarily meeting the state target of twenty percent renewables by 2020. But keep in mind, when you get into the wind business, you need to basically build two generators. You have the wind farm, and then you need a backup. Why? Because the wind doesn't always blow. Basically, the wind capacity for wind turbines and wind farm on a national basis is thirty to thirty-five percent. It's higher here, it's forty to forty-five, but it's not seventy or eighty. And that's what you'll need. So it's a great concept, but you end up having to build two generation systems. And that's sort of the disadvantage of it there. The other factor is that when you get more than about twenty percent from wind, it changes the dynamics of the grid, and you have to upgrade the grid. So these are things that can happen, but over time and with a lot of investment. And right now, given the schedule and given the assets that you have, I wouldn't have it at the top of the list. So in conclusion, Nierman, one, you know, it's a good unit. It provides the basis for reliable power generation. I mean, it's almost all but paid for, and it's yours. And it's been maintained well, and it's been run well over the years. There are a few better locations than Kansas City for coal, for base-loaded access. And I'll concede that I didn't recognize that until I started working through all these numbers and realized, you know, the turnaround time for the trains from Wyoming is four days. So there's, you know, it's low-cost. It's a good approach. Proximity to the low-sulfur coal sources, and as I said, the transportation infrastructure. Natural gas is important. We would be silly to ignore it, given its availability and its price. But it's not necessarily something to build a base-loaded plant around unless you have a lot of other options and you're not that in position. Natural gas is great to use, and Don's talked about how you'll be using it on some other units. But that's more like rounding out your investment portfolio. Having a solid coal unit with access to PRB provides a good option. And as I pointed out in my last bullet, you can exploit stable fuel prices to extract stable power prices. And I think that's the...
Good evening. My name is Dave McGilvery with Springstead. I've developed this first slide first to position at one of the primary decisions you'll have to make. And second, give you a little context for our perspectives. Ultimately, this two-hundred-and-fifty million, if you decide to proceed, that will all be financed with debt. Debt of the Board of Public Utilities issued by the Unified Government. And therefore, you would be the issuer of that. There's a lot of familiar faces. We worked through a lot of items over the last few years. There are some new faces, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of context for us. There are some new faces, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of context for us. Spring says independent financial advisors, we've worked for the Unified Government, Board of Public Utilities, literally for decades. Our objective and our role is to provide objective advice to all the decision-makers. So, it's our professional opinions, based on facts and our opinions on the situation. And the other, the last piece is, I work with a lot of municipalities that have electric utilities, municipal electric utilities, I work with a lot of municipal governments that don't. I would say, as a general condition, those with municipal electric utilities that are viable have a lot more favorable options than those that don't. So, I think there's a key connection between you two that is, I hate the word synergistic, but you know, each helps the other, and I think that's important. There's been some basic discussion to the previous workshops you've had, as well as just fundamentals relative to the financing topic of this. So, I'm going to address those in the following slides. $250 million is an awful lot of money, and therefore, there's been a question about the marketability of the bonds, that all this will be debt-financed. So, first, to clarify how that would be financed, it would be financed in three pieces. $100 million each of the next two years, and then $50 million in 2016. That's a lot of money, that's a lot of debt. But if you look at electric revenue bonds, which these are, I hate to say it, but that's fairly modest amount. So, in their world, where people are doing all of this, bond issues the size of $100 million are not that big. So, they are digestible by the market. And we've talked to the senior managing underwriter, as well as ourselves, believe that these will be well-received, and there's good marketability. And I think the last indicator on this is, myself, Lou Levin, Lori Austin, have been sort of besieged for the last year by other investment bankers, saying, "Can we get into this transaction? We'd like to underwrite these bonds, too." So, there's a lot of interest throughout the street, and if they didn't have that, the question of marketability would be higher. So, a lot of, I think there's a lot of interest. Corollary with that is, what are the interest rates? It's a lot of debt. Will our interest rates be competitive? We believe the answer to that is yes. It's yes for a couple of different reasons. First and foremost, interest rates are determined by credit quality. If you want to borrow money yourself, if you're a good credit risk, you have a low rate. If you're a poor credit risk, you have a high rate. So, the market looks at the credit rates. And just for those, I'll go over my short credit rating piece. One, the best credit rates you can have are AAA. And there's a few hundred entities in the country that have that. Locally, you look at, you know, the usual suspects, Overland Park, Johnson County, Sedgwick County, a couple of the other suburbs in that area. So, you have AAA. Then you get to the double A category, and the Unified Government is in the double A category, a bit broader base, still exceptionally good rates. The third category with very good rates is the A category. So, the Unified Government, I'm sorry, the Board of Public Utilities has ratings from three rating agencies, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. And each of those have a little different coding. In all three cases, the Board of Public Utilities is in the A category. Moody's little jargon is A2, which is in the middle of the A category. Standard &amp; Poor's and Fitch have A pluses, which are in the higher end of the A category. So, good ratings, mid to upper end of the A category. So, you have good credit ratings, that will drive the interest rates down. Two, in general, there's not a lot of bond transactions in Kansas. So, when something like this comes around, and we have Kansas investors, and people want to hold Kansas bonds, then there's a lot of interest in it, particularly if it's good credit quality, such as we have here. Also, if this moves forward, at least into the first quarter or two of 2014, interest rates will be very low. They're low now, and the expectation is they'll stay low. So, I think, one, the bond issues are marketable, and, two, they should be at very competitive rates. There's been a question, as I understand, about the total community indebtedness. And it's been put in the context of both the Unified Government and the Board of Public Utilities. What is the total indebtedness, and how do we stand up? Well, first, to answer the first question, Unified Government's indebtedness, I use general obligation bonds only. General obligation bonds are those where the property taxpayers of the Unified Government are ultimately responsible to pay that. They may not all be paid by property taxes, they can be paid by assessments and other fees, but they have a general obligation backing. And that number, as of, I took the last audited financial statements, December of 2012, $320 million. Unified Government has other bonds, sales tax, star bonds, et cetera, those are special bonds, they're not secured by the property taxpayer. The BPU has indebtedness, basically, all their indebtedness is backed by the revenues of the utility. 12/31/2012, their total indebtedness was $500 million. So, that's how much indebtedness is there. Then you say, you know, is that too much, too little? You know, everybody will bring their own perspectives to that. I mean, I open my property tax bill or whatever, and I know that's part of it. And in my world, I use the comparative. The Unified Government, Board of Public Utilities, as compared to all other local units in the United States, all other electric utilities in the other areas. And so, the people that do that are the rating agencies, because they look, these ratings are comparative. They're comparing the Unified Government to all other governments of a similar size, and same with the Board of Public Utilities. So, if I look at the Board of Public Utility, I look at their credit ratings, I have Standard &amp; Poor's, double A, stable. Stable means they have an outlook. It says if nothing changes, stable means your rating will stay the same. There's a positive outlook, which means if things continue, the rating will go up. And there's a negative outlook, that says if things continue in that direction, it could go down. So, for a while, for the last few years, Unified Government, double A, stable. Moody's has a double A3, which is the lower end of the double A category, and that has a negative outlook. And we've been working with Lou and others as to how to address that. If you look at the credit rating language specifically on the Unified Government's debt, Standard &amp; Poor's says moderate to high overall debt burden. Moody's, high debt burden, expected to remain manageable due to some non-lovey support. So, you know, this is just one category. Actually, they're sort of retooling the ratings, and debt normally has the lowest impact on your credit rating, if you can believe that with the new things. Socioeconomic factors are higher, general fund balance are much higher in terms of driving your credit rating. So, that's the Unified Government. Board of Public Utilities, their rating report language on debt, basically, in all these, they say that the debt is moderate to high, but still manageable. In all cases, and this comes back to this question before, it's the big question, in their ratings today, they already know about what could be $200 to $300 million of debt to support, you know, this proposed project. Because we recently had them rated last year, and going through that, we try to tell them what's going to happen, and so, they've already aware of this, and they've factored it into One piece, then, is, I said, it's very central to the marketability of the issue and the interest rate, and hence, the user rates, the electric utility, if we maintain the credit ratings. So, if you're going to do this, though they've already factored it in, could ratings change for the BPU? First, I don't guarantee anything I don't control, I don't control the credit ratings, so you never know. And you've got three different agencies, and you've got three different agency perspectives. You're at most, the BPU is at most risk for a rating downgrade by Moody's, because they have a negative outlook. So, of the three, the other two are stable, Moody's has a negative outlook. When you take their reports in total and look at them, what do the three rating agencies say? Challenges to ratings, challenges usually mean things are not as good as other folks that have the same rating. Liquidity, which is cash in the bank, and the BPU has gone through variability in that. In the last six months, they've raised it fairly significantly, to hit sort of the middle point of the window that the rating agencies were looking for. The second one is for socio-economic profile of the customer base, income levels, housing stock, and there are good improvements there, but here again, they look at comparatively across the United States for similarly rated credits. There are many positives for the BPU. I think that the most significant is that the structure and pace of user rate changes, they've had a regular program of user rate increases. Not a big jump, but a series of small ones, that's looked on very favorably. And they have a rate structure that says, if they have these abnormal costs, if they have to go purchase power and experience a significant increase in expenditures, they can pass that along. Another piece is, there's no state rate, the state does not have to approve the rates. The key driver of whether the ratings will change, at least for S&amp;P and Fitch, are they have to adhere to their user rate program, meaning continuing small steps up, recognize they have to be competitive with their neighbors. I think, I think that's it. I just have sort of one final word, and just in summary, you know, it is a lot of money. I think, from our perspective, in terms of being, will the bonds be placed, or they would place an attractive rate? We think that's very doable, and to the extent that's part of this, and we'd be glad to take any questions.
So, that completes the presentation from staff and from consultants, but we'd ask if there are any specific questions that commissioners may have, while we have them here, that we'd be able to answer.
Commissioner King.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the BPU Board. I can't imagine, when this first came out, how shocked or upset, probably wanted to puke. You know, I mean, it, it's terrible that this has happened. Yeah? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Anyway, I know you guys worked hard on this, extremely hard, and you had to. I'm for the project, but I have a couple of questions for Don. And Don, these questions are not new. Realizing that we are going to have a new administrator, one of my concerns is that you would decide to leave in short order, and I don't believe you have a second-in-command right now. So, I guess my question is, what's your future with BPU?
Well, naturally, I work at the pleasure of the Board, but I plan on, if the Board is supportive of it, to be here a minimum of at least two more years. And during that period of time, we would be looking at a transition. And there's some, a couple of positions that we'll be looking at, and so, but we'll have a good transition in place within that time.
Well, one of the things I want you to look at, obviously Dennis is stepping down, but we've got Doug ready, if something happens to Dennis. And I think you need to get somebody in the number-two spot that's ready on both sides, not just one. That's probably a hard task to do, but it's going to be important for all of us. Another thing that I've commented on before is, I want to make sure that there's going to be a whole lot of new jobs, and what you told us last time was, that your employees will be retrained in different jobs, and that no one would lose their job, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we just did something today. We're down next to the General Motors plant. And when I was a kid, June 3rd, 1976, when I hired in General Motors, there was 5,000 people down at that plant, and Fairfax was full. But the expansion of the General Motors facility, and the Razor facility that's right next door, and more to come, if we don't do something, if we don't support BPU, then what's going to happen to the $600 million expansion? What's going to happen to the two or three companies that are already talking about coming down there to supply the General Motors facility? That's a lot of people. Nobody wants to spend the $250 million. But nobody wants to go anywhere either. You know, it's huge when we look around the room, because there's a lot of BPU people thinking, "Where's my future at?" That is the exact same thing I felt at General Motors before the mayor stepped up and said, "We're going to build a new place." I don't know exactly how you feel, but you also have to bear with us a little bit, because it's a big responsibility for us as well. Because we don't just represent the BPU employees, we represent the whole city. So, the city will get a chance to talk about this, but I think that people have to realize, this isn't something that the Board wanted to do, it's not something that we wanted to do. But we also have to take care of our employees.
If I may also make a comment, very good comments. This project, also, for about three, three-and-a-half years of its duration, will employ slightly over 400 skilled craft employees, and we will, we're going to work to get into the contracts that they hire, all the local, Wind Dot County, skilled craft people that are not working at the moment, to be assigned to this project, so we can get an additional benefit. And we'll try to utilize as many local contractors, too, naturally, as we can. So, it'll be, it would be a big boost, economic boost to the community.
Commissioner Kieran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to everybody for a very insightful, very thoughtful, and very data-filled presentation. And Mr. Gray, unfortunately for you and Ms. Austin, I have challenged you both publicly on more than one occasion, to give me more data, to provide additional rationale, to provide additional justification, and I want to now publicly thank you both, because you have done that. You have provided every bit of data that I've asked for, and you have really gone above and beyond, and I really believe that although it makes me sick to my stomach that we are being forced to invest this amount of money on that plan, I believe you have created what is, for me, a rationale that, although I don't like it, I can absolutely support. And I want to thank you publicly, both, for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker.
Actually, I think both commissioners have covered. I will emphasize to the Board, to the members of the Board of Public Utilities, that to invest this 250 million, and certainly, I anticipate an unrelenting federal government in the future. It's important to me to have this stability of leadership. It's important for me that there's a number-two man.
Or woman.
Or woman, person, number-two person. Especially a number-two person that is gifted in the electrical, production, distribution, and generation aspects of utility operation. Life being what it is, Mr. Gray, and I hope you have at least two more years. If you were to drop dead today, I'm not sure...
We did not pray before this meeting, so I would just invite those prayers now.
Not sure who would be running the utility. I've seen a lot of information, I am impressed with what you have presented in data, I have great confidence in Mr. McGilvery, I've known him for a long time. Listen to your expert, you know, certainly, I can't find fault with his reasoning at this point. But I, too, hate like everything to have to do this in this community, but the utility is far too important to the, first and foremost, to the workers that are there, and their families, and also, very important to the financial survival of the Unified Government, and to lose the public utility would be a devastating hit, ultimately, for not only the ratepayers, but for the taxpayers in this community.
Thank you. Commissioner Philbrook.
Yes, thank you for all the comments from the rest of the group up here. There is no way for me to express how happy I am to see Don still up here. I used to work for him a long time ago. And I will say that... And I will say that we have been blessed for all these years to have our own utility. And that is one thing I would hate to see us lose. And I know that we have to keep reinvesting and taking care of that infrastructure to keep that utility going. And it does hurt like heck. And there's going to be people kicking and screaming, you know, about all the money that we have to spend. But we're going to either spend it on this end or on the other end. So I prefer this, and if we have to do it. Thank you for coming forward and taking all the hits from us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to thank all the gentlemen and ladies who made behind the scenes, who also put this together. This is about the third time I've heard a version of the presentation. It seems logical. As the rest of the commissioners who spoke tonight said, it's, it's a hard nut to crack, but we must apply energy to the community. There is one thing I'd like to get clarity on. I understand from one of the slides already that the anticipated cost of the recommended action, retrofitting Nierman, would result to each of us who have BPU bills of an increase over time of about $12. I just want a clarity, though, from Mr. McGilvery's presentation about whether or not the issue of the bonds would have, what impact on property taxes. I heard something about that, and I wasn't sure about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. It would have no impact on property taxes from the bonds, because the bonds are paid fully by the net revenues of the Board of Public Utilities through the electric rate system. So the bonds will have no property tax rate yet, not to the implication.
Thank you. One other thing that may not have been talked about as much here tonight as in some of the past meetings, and I think the public should hear this, is what the consequences are for us not conforming to MATS. So could someone address that? And also, what would happen if, for some reason, we do not get this additional one-year extension to '17? Is there going to be a penalty that would accrue, regardless of which option is selected? Thank you.
The, that's still an unknown, as far as if we can get an ongoing or a continuance of the extension after April 2016. We're working very hard on that effort. However, you know, we do have ownership of Dogwood. And when we have had shortages of energy recently, we've tapped into more energy from Dogwood. So that is a good, efficient gas plant. It's not as low-cost energy as Nierman, but it's reasonably close as long as the gas price is low, like it is now. So I look at power pricing still being stable. If that's the route we have to go. The worst route would be naturally during that one-year period. If we can't use Nierman, and we can't get enough from, let's say, Dogwood, then we would have to buy on the spot market, perhaps. But in the meantime, staff is working on filling that gap with some power. And we're working on that now to see if there's anyone out there that would be willing to offer 100 or so megawatts roughly on a contract basis for that period of time. So we're working on those things. I feel confident we'll get something in place that will be okay, and it won't be a hard economic burden on the community. But that'll be the type of thing that we'll be doing. And then as far as if we don't comply, it's, it's a law. Essentially, if we don't make any attempt to do anything at Nierman, since we can't run gas in that unit, April 2015, it'll cease to operate, and we won't be able to operate anymore. The reason why we got the one-year extension is because we told the state that hopefully we'll be able to get the funding in place in order to start putting the AQC controls on. And they said, okay, if you do that, we'll give you a one-year extension. However, if we do not go forward with that, then the match rule says, no more after March or April 2015, we would have to cease burning coal, since we have no or have made no attempt to put controls on.
Let me ask you, I think, with no viable option then, what would be the penalties for us in terms of dollars that the federal government may assess? Or is that what would happen?
My understanding is, for example, if we were to continue to operate Nierman, the penalties could be as severe as $37,500 per violation. So since we're talking particulates, sulfur dioxide compounds, nitrous oxide compounds, mercury violations, we're talking a number of violations each and every day. And if they could impose, not saying they would, but they could impose a penalty of that. I will say this, they are not going to allow us to defy the law. Because they would need to set an example with the community. If we were to choose to do that, they can't allow people to just arbitrarily meet the law and not comply with the law. It's a law, and also there's criminal penalties. If I knowingly violate the law, I could, I could face criminal penalties. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't be me saying that we need to run the unit after April, because I wouldn't want to risk myself in that kind of harm. But that's, that's the severity, that's what we're dealing with.
Commissioner Walker.
Don.
Very good.
This, aside from this microphone being a problem, I think one of the questions that we're going to be asked, and that, that you and I have talked about previously, are you looking at all of the expenditure side efficiencies? I mean, what are you doing to make sure that we're as efficient and economical employee-wise, employee cost, structural organization, those kinds of issues? And I think you know what I mean. At the same time that we're going to be spending this, this amount of money, because that's also going to be an ongoing and presumably increasing cost that will add to the overall operating expense as time goes on. Employees have a right to expect raises. Certainly, some will get some, some might not. But what are you doing?
Well, first of all, we, we do have limited resources, as you know, but we did embark upon a major capital improvement plan to upgrade all of our meters, which we're very, very close to getting that completed, as far as getting the hardware in. The backend support, the software development, what we call Energy Engage, we're working on now. The benefits for our customers is going to be tremendous when it's all said and done. When we launch our web portal, they'll actually be able to see real-time, if they so desire and are interested, hour by hour, what their energy usage is within their home. Water, same way. I'll give you one example of the benefit already that we're seeing with the water meters. They're two-way communication systems, so they're reporting back to us real-time information. First of all, we used to have 20-meter readers. We're down to roughly four. So we have, it has allowed us to reduce some staffing. But these meters report back, so there's analytics that goes with this information, with this data. We have been averaging two or three customers a day, and it will gain momentum, with time, of course, of calling customers and letting them know that we notice that in a 24-hour period, there's no zero consumption, that water's being used in their premise around the clock, which indicates a leak. I cannot tell you the thanks and appreciation from our customers saying, wow, that's great. Didn't realize you could do that. We had one instance where a customer went on vacation. We saw a lot of usage still going through the meter. We made contact via cellphone. The person remembered they left their hose running. They had a neighbor go over and turn it off. If we wouldn't have made that call, who knows how much it would have cost that customer. But what I'm saying is, that technology not only makes us more efficient, reduces our costs, but the key in all of it is we're providing better and better customer service. So that's one area. Also, I continually benchmark us with all of our competitors, both investor-owned and public. I've been doing that. We've had two formal studies done. Our costs are well in line, especially with public utilities. And we're very competitive and in line with private utilities. I'm re-initiating that study for this year, or this coming year. And the Board just recently approved our budget, so the funds are in place to be able to do that study. Compensation, we're always evaluating compensation. We've done several formal studies evaluating our salaries and our wages and our compensation. One of the things I am working on is working closely with our bargaining units. We're all in this together. We need to solve problems together. And so I've been working with a lot of the leadership from the union, and will continue to do so, in helping find ways to be more efficient. And also share information, what we're seeing, so we can come up and continue to come up with good, fair compensation packages. Because we want to retain the best employees. You know, we hire primarily out of our local community. We will continue to do so. It's one of the reasons why we're a strong organization, is because we have a lot of common bond amongst us. But just kind of roundabout way answering your question, how, but we are continuing to try to find ways to reduce our costs. And the, the benchmarking, as well as the, some of the new technology we've put in place, I think is really going to pay dividends. We're going to also put in a new phone system. I'm sure that many of you have been contacted about waiting times and so forth on our phone system. We're going to make vast improvements in that. A good messaging system and so forth. So again, our technology upgrades are focusing right on our customers and helping improve our quality of service.
Okay.
And we hope to have all that in by next year.
Thank you. I want to ask if any of the Board of Utilities have any comments. You don't have a little button for your light, but if there's any one of the members who have a question or a comment that you'd like to make, I want to offer that time for you all. We are a little bit over time. We'd hope to end at 6:30. But I want to make sure this conversation is complete. Is there anyone on the Board of Public Utilities who'd like to make a comment? All right. Couple of things. One, just in terms of wrapping up, I'll give David Alvey the last word here before we close out. I would like to ask our staff to get this presentation, all the presentations tonight, posted on our website as soon as possible. Hopefully, that can go up as early as tomorrow, so anyone watching or is interested can go find that. Would the BPU be able to find that? Would they be able to find it on the BPU website as well? Okay, so it'll be on the BPU website as well. So we're going to get that up on both of our websites. If you have any questions and you want to look at those, please feel free to look at that. This other piece is, in terms of the Commission, the question I have for our Commission is, have people made up their mind? Do people need more information? Do you want to, is there a piece of information missing that you want an answer to before you feel comfortable voting on this? If, if the Commission is ready to vote, there's no reason we couldn't move this forward to next week's agenda. If there are other issues that you have or other information that you want to gather, then we could look at a January issue. I am clear that, I have heard clearly from BPU, we're going to have to vote on this soon. And our next, we have one meeting on the 19th, and our next meeting, our first meeting in January is what day? The 9th. So if you don't have further questions, or if you feel like they're small enough questions that you can find out in the next week, I'd be inclined to move this forward to next week's. If there's not a consensus in terms of being ready to vote, then I think we can, we can talk about when you want to have it. Is there anyone here on the Commission who is not ready to vote by next week? Yeah? Go ahead.
Will the public, will there be a public component to this, though? And considering what may also be on the agenda?
Well, we have, we have a lot of exciting things happening next Sunday, or next Sunday. I can say Sunday's going to be exciting, too. Next Thursday, we have, on the, on the 19th, we do have another public hearing on the T-bones. And so we will have an opportunity, we would have an opportunity on the 19th for the public to make comment, if there's anyone who would like to do that, do so on this issue.
Mayor, realizing we have two pretty big deals, could we start the meeting at 6?
That's, have we already, is it possible on a, on a week's notice to move the meeting an hour earlier? Is it possible to move the meeting an hour earlier in terms of our notification deadlines?
I believe if you get the notice out, you can do that.
Would commissioners be available at 6 o'clock for an earlier meeting? I think we can do that. Okay. I don't want us to think just because we start an hour earlier that we need to go an hour longer, right? Okay, Walker.
Hey, why not take a look at a special meeting for this? I got a window, do you have a board meeting on the 17th or 18th? Okay. I have an idea.
Well, the other issue, too, I think the other issue we're running into, we're running into the holidays here, in terms of not only our availability and our experts' availability, but also the availability of our citizens to pay attention, because at some point, our citizens are going to want to turn around and pay attention to, to the holidays. And so I think the sooner we can get this handled, I think next Thursday is reasonable. I think we can start at 6 o'clock and plan to move that forward next Thursday. Is there any, is there any objection to doing it? I'm just going to say, there needs to be a major objection, but I'm looking at next Thursday, 6 o'clock, and having this on the agenda, there will be a public component. All right.
This, Mayor, may not be major, but I'm just, what would be the next opportunity? I guess my, my only concern is that we'll have two major issues next week. And even though we start earlier, that's no guarantee we're going to be out of here early, because both of these are major issues. And to make sure that the public gets the opportunity to say whatever they want to about both issues, I was just hoping that could be broken up. Because, you know, just because we start earlier, I don't think it's going to be.
So I'll ask, I'll ask Mr. Alvey what your position is from the Board of Public Utilities perspective, if we waited till January 9th.
Well, obviously, we would prefer to, to move it to next week. And I will say that we also have had public hearing regarding this. And so there was already an opportunity for the public to engage this more deeply. However, I understand that the, at the unified government, at the Commission meetings, there might be more folks here. So I think we would be willing to do it next week. I'm not sure it would put us so far behind if we moved to the 9th, though.
Let's do it next week. Now, I would say, to, to help the unified government, Commissioners and Mayor, if you want to move it to the 9th, I think we can live with that. It would be nice, naturally, if we could have it next week, but if you feel it's better. The T-bone issue, you're probably right on the mark, there's probably going to be some comment about that. So if you feel that's kind of mixing two, two major items, we could, we could go to the 9th, and it shouldn't hurt, as long as you don't delay it any further.
I think our record, we were talking about casinos at this time of year, and I think we went to 1:00 in the morning during an ice storm. we went to 1:00 in the morning during an ice storm. So I'm predicting we're going to do better than that next week. So I think we need to get this taken care of next week. We've got the information on the table. Unless there's concrete data that someone says, you know, I haven't seen this number. I think we've seen the numbers, I think people have had time to make up their minds. This was presented in September, this has been in front of us for a couple of months. I'm not asking people if you're excited about it, I'm asking you if you have all the information you need. And those are two different questions, right? Because I don't know anyone on the, I haven't heard anyone on the Board of Public Utilities who's excited about this, I haven't heard anyone on the commission who's excited about it. This is a government mandate that we need to address. I believe the Board of Public Utilities, board and staff have done their due diligence. I believe our staff has done due diligence in preparing it. I think we have the information we need to make a decision. I trust that we'll make a good decision. My hope is, obviously, that we'll support this, because I don't think we have anywhere else to go. So I think we need to get this on the agenda next week, we need to move through it, and we need to take care of business. And it's before the holidays, but I think we can all enjoy the holidays a little more if we don't have to worry about this anymore. So I'm going to, the last thing, Mr. Alvey, do you want to make a closing comment?
Just again, to express our thanks to the members of the commission, and I'd like to personally express my thanks to the members of the Board of Public Utilities, and our staff, and those who've been involved in this. Again, we find ourselves in a very difficult situation, it's a very complex situation. It came at us very rapidly, and I think that because we did follow a due diligence and followed a good process, I believe we've come up with the best recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, before I adjourn, the good news is, the Board of Commissioners have an executive session regarding litigation and property acquisition. I would entertain a moment, a motion to recess upstairs for 30 minutes.
Second.
I already said litigation and property acquisition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you all for coming.